Second.
Third.
I think this is what you get for missing meetings.[30.75][30.75](Laughter).
Okay, we will call the October 8th work session into order and I turn the matter over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to ask the city attorney to request a motion that we go into executive session to discuss some legal items.
I've just requested motion to move into executive session to discuss potential litigation.
So moved.
How much time?
I'm sorry, 20 minutes.
It's been moved and seconded.
And we would ask that myself and the city manager remain.
For approximately 20 minutes, is that what I've heard?
Yes.
So that would be the motion, that we move into executive session, meeting the city manager, legal staff, and elected officials. All those in favor say or raise your right hand. We are in executive session.
Yeah, too bad, too bad he uses us, he uses intelligence for evil.
We are out of executive session and back on our work session, so I would again refer back to the city manager for the next issue.
Firearms in city buildings?
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Hart. At this point, I'd like to ask city attorney, Mr. Sablett, to provide an update and presentation on firearms in city buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you, if I may proceed. A few months ago, we gave a presentation on the change in the law that on January 1st, 2014 concealed carry licenses would be able to carry concealed firearms in all city buildings unless we installed metal detection devices and security personnel in all or some city buildings, or enact a resolution to exempt specific buildings until December 31st, 2017. And in order to enact that resolution, a building security plan would have to be developed. I provided some documents to you and the, I guess the first thing to look at is this multi-colored document shows the cost of if we were going to install metal detectors and security personnel. We tried to, we worked with department heads to develop what buildings are accessed by the public most often, and it was City Hall, the Holiday Building, the Topeka Zoo, T-PAC, municipal court and the law enforcement center. And we have costs associated with what it would cost to install metal detectors and adequate security measures at those buildings. And you see for City Hall, it would be a one-time cost of $7,100. The Holiday Building would be $21,100. The difference in the cost there is there would have to be some, some internal adjustments to how the Holiday Building is set up, divided workstations, because there's two different entrances. And they anticipate additional staff three days a month during special events and paydays, which would be an ongoing $4,400 cost annually. The Topeka Zoo would be $47,000, but I've spoken to Mr. Wiley at length and he's not interested in metal detectors and security personnel. In fact, there are four, four other municipally owned and operated zoos currently in the state of Kansas and they all allow concealed carry, so that was his opinion on that. T-PAC already hires security personnel with wands and their traffic is event-specific, so Venue Works operates in T-PAC and already provides that, so there would be, I don't believe there'd be any change. Municipal Court and the Law Enforcement Center currently meet the security requirements. So that would, one option, if the governing body was interested in preventing concealed carry would be installing these metal detectors and incurring these costs. And to be clear, these costs would have to come out of 2013 because this has to be done by January 1st of 2014, so you're looking at 2013 costs. The other option is that they allow you to develop a security plan. And if you look at the other attachment that I gave you, this is a sample security plan that was provided by the League of Kansas Municipalities. And we would create, essentially create a security plan to be created for each exempted building. It would be drafted in such a way that it would supply adequate security to the occupants of the, of the building. Then we would provide that to the Attorney General in law enforcement. It's not subject to public disclosure. Once we develop that security plan, then you could, then the governing body would pass a resolution basically adopting that security plan and we would forward that to the Attorney General. Now, I want to be specific because I think there was some confusion last time, probably I led the confusion on the different options. The security plan is cost neutral, it doesn't cost anything. It is, except for staff time, to prepare a security plan if there's specific buildings that you would be interested in exempting from the new law. And then a resolution would be placed in front of the council. The other option is we do nothing. If we do nothing, then anyone can carry a firearm into a public and that would be concealed or open. And that's based on the language as legal staff has reviewed it. It doesn't reference concealed carry, it just references any weapon. And it's not limited to those with concealed carry licenses. And I just have some questions that I thought you may have and I tried to prepare answers to. Do the security guards have to be armed? No. Can an individually carry a firearm openly into a city building? Yes, that was the legislation that came out a year ago on open carry and can you restrict that in public buildings, parks? And the Attorney General's opinion is you cannot completely prohibit the open carry in city facilities. City of Oland Park attempted to challenge the opinion of the Attorney General, but that has since been dismissed. Immunity. If a municipality provides adequate security measures and adequate security measures are defined as the metal detection devices and security personnel, or they take no action, then the municipality is not liable for the wrongful acts or omissions of people that are carrying concealed within the building. Can an employee carry a firearm into a public building? I'll tell you, there's a split amongst city attorneys on this issue. And the city of Wichita submitted this as a question to the Attorney General for clarification. Myself and other attorneys in our office have reviewed the plain language of the statute and it's our interpretation that under the statute, the city can only prevent employees with a concealed permit from carrying a firearm into a public building if the city implements appropriate security measures or develops a security plan and adopts the appropriate resolution. This was brought up, the League of Kansas Municipalities, they had a different take on it, but I've been in contact and other attorneys in our office have been in contact and there's, I'll just say that there's a split among the city attorneys on what we can do with employees, but when you plainly read the statute, I think we can't, we couldn't prevent employees from carrying concealed unless we implement appropriate security measures or adopt the appropriate resolution. So essentially, the governing body has three options. They can do nothing, allow firearms into any city building, direct the city manager, expend the resources to install metal detection devices and retain security personnel for some or all of buildings, or we could develop a security plan and adopt the appropriate resolution if there are some buildings that you want to get an exemption for, for the next four years. I know that's a lot of information in a short period of time. We've talked about this previously, so today we're just here to get some direction if you want us to prepare security plans for City Hall, the Holiday Building. We'll be happy to do that and get a resolution in front of you in short order, hopefully by the middle of November.
I think Councilman Hartman has a question.
Two questions, if I may, Your Honor. One of the options before the governing body is to do nothing by the end of the year. Would that, would that require that we remove the security from, from the court or the LEC?
No, we, that, that security would remain because it would be consistent with what's required by law to, by the new law, to keep people with concealed carry or weapons out. We wouldn't have to take those out, we could leave those in.
And a second question is more to the city manager. The, the cost of the metal detectors and adequate security, have you identified a funding source, if that's the route we would choose to go?
Councilmember Hartman, we do not have our funding source at this point for 2013.
Okay, thank you.
Really a comment. Just for what it's worth, I think we're currently spending about $250,000 a year on the security that we have. It's, it's kind of buried in the budget from department to department, but a couple of years ago, it was added together. I may be wrong, that's the number I've got. I personally just really believe in having the buildings as open as possible. I'm not sure that we're getting any additional protection, perhaps a false sense of security with, with what we have, and so I'm not personally feeling compelled to add security to the buildings. That's all, thank you.
I guess I want to make sure I understand the, the information that's been given to us, because that's how I read the, the law, that it, it isn't limited to people who are just permit holders.
Right.
It would be anybody.
Right.
And what we can do is exempt for four more years, all of the city buildings, if we don't have the funds, is that correct?
We can exempt them if we develop a security plan.
A security plan, but I mean if, if we're concerned about. And I guess the follow-up question is, did the state, because I know the state has decreased funding to local units of government as it is, did they provide, are they going to provide any funding to any local units of government to do these things?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, I, I guess I would say considering what may be involved, I would hope we would be looking at the option of doing the security plans, but I know that depends on what the rest of the, the group thinks, but that's just my, my input.
I guess.
Anything else?
If I may, the, I guess my follow-up question is, is the governing body interested in doing security plans for all the buildings or just those that are regularly visited by the public?
Does anybody have any comments or? Mr. Hartman and then Ms. Schwartz.
Yeah, just in terms of staff time, I'd say just the ones that are visited by the public.
And that would be, and that would be the recommendation of staff, is that we've identified four buildings that are regularly visited by staff that we could develop. It's really three, City Hall, two, City Hall and the Holiday Building, because the zoo wants to remain as open as possible and that's their recommendation, so we could develop security plans for City Hall and the Holiday Building, prepare those plans and get an ordinance in front of you in the middle of November. Those are the two buildings that were identified as having the highest traffic.
Well, I, I'll let Councilmember Schwartz respond too, but I, I, with all due respect to the zoo staff, I, I don't agree with that. I think that is regularly visited by the public and if anybody, even not with a permit, just anybody can wander in and out with weapons where there's a lot of children, I guess I would say we should develop the security plan and then it'll be up to the, this body to determine if they really want to exempt that, but I, I'm not going off of just what the zoo staff say. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I attended that webinar on concealed carry and there were a lot of, a lot of cities on it, so, and I'm sure that you speak with a lot of the city attorneys, so is this, I'd like to find out or hear what they're doing in their cities as far as, you know, doing the resolution to exempt us for four more years, putting the security plans together, and, and especially zoos. I mean, I know we have zoos in our state that are in all the bigger cities.
Yeah, my conversations with, and I have personally talked to three different city attorneys and I would say first-class cities, and everybody is looking at the security plan and resolution as a solution just because of the cost associated with installing metal detectors and security personnel, that I think everybody is looking at that as the, let's, let's get four years, let's see if we can budget this. And the city of Wichita submitted six different questions to the Attorney General on this specific issue and what they've been dealing with employees, so I think we're also kind of waiting to see what the answers to those questions are going to be, but I believe the safest route and the one that most cities are adopting is to adopt the security plan and accompanying ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
The only building that I'm concerned about is this room right here, the municipal courtroom, and not for the city council meeting, but for the court functions. I think having firearms in court is probably not a good idea. The rest of them, I really don't see the necessity. I, in fact, think that our security measures in City Hall are too restrictive as they are and prohibit people from coming and going out of City Hall. When you have to write down your name and driver's license and your, your business and all that, I think it inhibits people from accessing government. And we're not, we're not talking about, you know, deranged individuals with firearms, we're talking about people who are licensed to carry firearms by the state of Kansas.
No, it's any.
Open carry is a little bit different, and the reality is, is that if somebody open carries a firearm into a city building, you're going to see that. So if, if we need to respond, I think we can respond accordingly. But the reality is, is that we're going to spend a lot of time and a lot of resources on something that we can't fix.
If I may, Councilman, the only, I appreciate those comments, the only thing I would point out is that the prosecution section and the probation section are both located in City Hall, and having worked as the chief of prosecution, the people you see in the courtroom are the same people that you see in prosecution, and I think sometimes there's a misunderstanding that in prosecution, probation, we deal with the same individuals that they deal with in district court, we deal with gang members, we deal with violent criminals, we're dealing with them in a different situation, so I completely understand that we want, we want it to be as open as possible, but we do have two areas within City Hall where we deal with the same issues that we deal with in municipal court, and that would be my only response to that.
Is there anything else, city manager?
Councilmember, there is no, no more items.
Okay, I will say that we are adjourned on our way.
No.
Whatever.
There is no more items.
While the council meeting is ordered, it will be a big rise in your business. The administration remains standing for the official allegiance.
Good evening. Will you all join me in a moment of silence, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two proclamations this evening. The first is for Fire Prevention Week. And coming up, I believe, is Investigator Michael Martin, Chief Bailey, Fire Marshal Greg Moody, Public Education Officer Banks. Is that correct? Whereas, the City of Topeka is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And two of every five home fires start in a kitchen. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, the City of Topeka Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And Topeka residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety. And whereas, the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Prevent Kitchen Fires," effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and call and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fire. And now, therefore, I, Larry Wolgast, Mayor of the City of Topeka, do hereby proclaim October 6th to 12th as Fire Prevention Week in Topeka. And I urge all the citizens to observe these cautions and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Topeka Fire and Emergency Services.
Honorable Mayor Wolgast and members of the council, on behalf of Chief Bailey and all the members of your Topeka Fire Department, I accept with great pride this proclamation dedicating this as Fire Prevention Week. Popular legend has it, on October 8th in 1871 in Chicago, Illinois, Mrs. O'Leary's cow kicked over a lantern, which sparked one of the greatest fires and most deadliest fires in the United States. Out of this tragedy and death of nearly 250 people and the loss of 17,000 structures, the concepts of fire prevention and Fire Prevention Week were born. As noted in this proclamation, this year's theme is Preventing Kitchen Fires. These fires are completely preventable, and they occur far too often within our community. The men and women of Topeka Fire Department are dedicated to reducing this number through education and awareness. Having this in mind, the Topeka Fire Department, along with Local 83, will be hosting an open house this Saturday, October 12th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at our administrative offices at 324 Southeast Jefferson. At this free event, which is open to the public, citizens will have the opportunity to meet the men and women who proudly serve this community. Free food and drink will be available, and there will be many interactive events and informative presentations. Fire trucks and equipment will be on display, so it will be fun for the entire family. Fire inspectors will also be available to speak with citizens and to assist them in developing their own fire safety and escape plans. We will also have available the opportunity for citizens to sign up to have smoke detectors for free installed in their residence by Topeka Fire Department personnel. So, once again, I want to thank you very much for your support, Mr. Mayor, the council, and I look forward to seeing you all at our open house.
Thank you. Thank you. I've attended that several times. It is a very enjoyable educational experience, and urge families to do that. Oh, Investigator, here's your... The next group is the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. If they would come forward, please. I know we have a good group here, so please come on up. This is the members of the Topeka Chapter, and I know Elizabeth Ross is going to be the accepting person here. We'll get them on around. Room for everyone. Whereas, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority is an international service organization founded in 1908 by college-educated Afro-American women at Howard University in Washington, D.C. And whereas, Alpha Kappa Alpha has approximately 200,000 women members worldwide, developing and implementing global leadership through timeless service programming intended to help transform the economic, educational, and health outcomes of their local communities. And whereas, Alpha Kappa Alpha's Topeka members take great pride in their service to the city through their undergraduate chapter at Washburn University and graduate chapter, Alpha Iota Omega. And whereas, the Alpha Iota Omega chapter is committed to strengthening the civic capacity of its members and fellow Topequians by engaging in voter registration, education, advocacy, and leadership programs for young women. And whereas, on October 13, 2013, the Alpha Iota Omega chapter will celebrate 85 years of service to all. With emphasis on the Topeka community, therefore, I, Larry Wolgast, Mayor of the City, do hereby proclaim October 13th as Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Day in Topeka. Would you like to make some comments?
I will be very brief. We are very excited that we had this proclamation. Also, I'm going to give you just a little bit of history. Alpha Kappa Alpha has been here for 85 years. And during that time, USD 501 has honored some of our members. Meadows Elementary, that Ms. Meadows was an Alpha Kappa Alpha. Ross Elementary, Barbara Ross was an Alpha Kappa Alpha. The Holland Building, Ms. Holland was an Alpha Kappa Alpha. Mamie Williams Magnet School, Mamie Williams was an Alpha Kappa Alpha. And we also will have a celebration on Saturday at the Plaza Hotel, and you're welcome to come and celebrate with us at 8:00. Just everybody come on out and help us celebrate 85 years. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you very much. There are no presentations, so we'll proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wolgast.
Here.
Ms. Hiller.
Here.
Mr. Campos.
Here.
Ms. Ortiz.
Ms. Everhart.
Here.
Ms. De La Isla.
Here.
Mr. Manspeaker.
Here.
Ms. Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
And Mr. Harmon.
Deputy Mayor Ortiz is ill this evening and could not be at the meeting. I believe there are no corrections or additions to the consent agenda, so the clerk will read.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Richard Harmon, granting Tonk, Colt, and exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 concerning noise prohibitions. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Richard Harmon, granting Sharad Monholland an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 concerning noise prohibitions. C are minutes of the regular meeting of October 1, 2013, and there are no applications.
Okay, council, you have heard the consent agenda. Is there discussion or action? Ms. Elise Hall moves to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Campos seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved. Proceed to new business, which is a labor agreement.
A is approval of a one-year labor agreement between the City of Topeka and the Water Pollution Control Division Local Union.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Carol Foreman, Assistant City Attorney, to provide information on this agreement and answer any questions that you would have.
Thank you. And Ms. Foreman made a presentation last week in the closing minutes of the work session as a large crowd was coming back in. So, if you want to review that again, I don't know that anyone was really being able to hear or understand your comments.
I understand. So, I will go over everything I say in a little more detail than I normally would for the regular meeting. So, we are, I'm here tonight to ask for the final approval for the Water Pollution Control Labor Agreement. The City and the WPC, which is how we refer to the Water Pollution Control Labor Unit, the negotiating teams reached a tentative agreement for a one-year contract for the year 2014. And that tentative agreement was ratified by the union. And the wage package that was part of that agreement was, there's two components. The first component is a .75 percent increase to the wage schedule for 2014. That's an across-the-board. And then, the other component is a one step for eligible employees who meet expect, who get a rating of meets expectation or better on their annual performance evaluation. Now, the cost for that, for just the 2014 package, is a little over $66,000 or a 2.14 percent increase. Now, the total cost to the budget is a 3.35, 3.35 percent increase to the budget. And the, there, do you have questions? I have a couple.
And just that difference, the difference, the reason there's a 3.3 and a 2.7 is...
Because if you remember in, you know, we've, when we've had these labor contract discussions, from the very beginning, you know, we started with this sort of chart. And there are built-in expenses for benefits that increase that 2.14 to the three point, to the 3.35 in this particular instance. So, it's those built-in benefits that are, say, a cost that the city's going to have to bear regardless of whether there's an increase or not. So, does that refresh your memory of our conversations regarding that?
Thank you.
Okay. Since this was, I say, a full contract being negotiated, there are a couple other items besides wages that we discussed. And two that are noteworthy that are new to the contract that you should be aware of is that we agreed that we would allow union officers up to 26 hours a year to perform union business. Now, this is very similar to provisions in other contracts. This particular contract did not have any hours allowable for union business other than for grievance. So, I say, this really is just something that I say mirrors other contracts. And then, there is one additional personal day that was granted that helped us get across the finish line, quite frankly, for, I say, this contract year. The other changes to the contract really are just clarifying current practices, past practices. So, I don't think I need to go over those unless you have questions about those. But I did want to point out those two that I say I think are noteworthy. So, I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Foreman? Ms. Hiller?
I have one. First, I want to compliment you, the negotiating team, city manager, the union. I appreciate the work that all of you have done. I know also that we're talking, that we kind of do these negotiations as we have in the past, and that we're talking about changing, changing up on that process. And I just, I have to ask a question about the time. I've been harping on labor, on cost of labor for a long time. Were there any instructions to your team or to all of you at the table about quantifying time in terms of how much its value is and how much its loss might be to the city?
Are you talking about the additional personal, personal day, is what, okay?
Mm-hmm. And... It could be anything, but in this case, we've got that day.
In this, in this particular case, I just, to make that clear. You know, we had conversations about the policy around this, and there are concerns, and rightfully so. But as I have to say, we agreed to this to get us across the finish line. And this is something maybe in the future we need to look at more closely and strategize about. But at this point in time, this was, we felt, the best thing to do to, I say, so we could come to an agreement and move forward.
Are there other questions? What is your pleasure?
Moves to approve the contract.
Moves to approve the contract. Ms. Everhart seconds. Discussion? Ms. Hiller?
On the contract, it just has troubled me enough, I want to raise the issue. It's tough to do it right now because the water pollution control guys are wonderful and they do a great job. And I really think everyone did the traditional job of negotiating as they did. But when I looked at, there are 59 employees in this particular bargaining unit. Another day off a year for those 59 employees is worth about $12,000 to the city. If it were in the cash analysis of what we've got in front of us, it would push it up by about 10 percent on the base and on the total. And that was already high in terms of the guidance that the council gave to the negotiating The other thing is that the, those hours are equivalent to losing about .3 of an FTE. And what that means, particularly in a case of workers such as those for water pollution control, is that it pushes up our costs for standby pay as well as for overtime pay to lose a third of an employee. I just, I just felt like I needed to point that out because it's significant, and it'll, it's significant for this contract, but it will be significant for those in the future. I think I need to, I feel uncomfortable, but to go ahead and offer an amendment, I would certainly understand if the rest of the council doesn't support it. But that amendment would be from page 77.
Ms. Hiller, I don't believe you can, this is a contract that is before us, and we have to accept it.
Or reject it.
Or reject it.
Yes.
We can't make changes to it because both the side has agreed to it. So, we accept it or reject it. We can't, we can't make changes to it.
Okay.
Now, we ha, and we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there other discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have two no, seven, seven yes, two no.
Seven haven't voted yes. The labor agreement is approved. Item B is a resolution on block grants. Clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson approving the 2014 Neighborhood Empowerment Grants as recommended by the Neighborhood Empowerment Grant Committee.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Reeve, the interim HND Director, to provide information on this item.
Mr. Reeve.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Before you tonight is a resolution to approve the 2014 Neighborhood Empowerment Projects, which are funded through the Federal Community and Development Block Grant Program, also known as CGBG. The empowerment program supports a variety of neighborhood-based public facility projects in our low and moderate-income neighborhoods, primarily our NIAs. This past spring, HND invited all the NIAs to apply for these funds. We held two application workshops in the spring. Applications were due this past June. We established a review committee consisting of three city staff and four neighborhood individuals who are not representing organizations who applied for these funds. The review committees reviewed the applications, scored them, and developed the funding recommendation. That is before you did night. Real quickly, I want to touch on the six projects that they are recommending. In the Chesney Park neighborhood, they are recommending funding a crossing light at 19th and Washburn. Also, in the Chesney Park neighborhood, completion of the Great mural wall at 20th and Fillmore. In the Highcrest neighborhood, the installation of park picnic tables and benches at Beatty Phillips Park. In the North Topeka West NIA neighborhood, construction of a concrete sidewalk on the north side of Lyman Road between Old Soldier Creek and basically where the new Walgreens is going in. Also, in North Topeka West, installation of a water fountain at McKinley Park. And then, lastly, Quentin Heights Steel NIA, the construction of a concrete sidewalk on Central Park Avenue from 23rd to 25th. These six projects total 139,200. As part of the consolidated plan process that this body went through back in August, we allocated 150,000 for the empowerment program. We have about 10,800 that we have set aside for contingency funds, project overruns, whatnot. But those six projects will eat up the majority of these funding. I should also point out that these are contended upon congressional action on the federal budget.
Who knows?
And with that, I will stand for questions, and staff is recommending a motion to approve the resolution.
Are there questions for Mr. Reeve? Mr. Harmon?
Thank you. I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Harmon has approved, has, has moved to approve the resolution. Ms. Everhart seconds. Is there discussion? Mr. Campos.
I want to, first and foremost, thank the NIAs for being civically engaged in this process. It shows that our layo, our form of government, which is that of a marble cake, where you have the city, the state, the county, and the federal government all working together to provide services for those who are most in need, is awesome. And it's a great example of how this process works. Now, whether or not the federal government allocates the money for this is another issue. Well, it's an entirely different conversation. But nonetheless, I do want to say thank you to our NIAs and all the work that they've put forth. And I encourage all other NIAs and NAS, like those that are being formed in Mrs. Schwartz's district, it seems like on a daily basis, to get more involved, you know, and to be civically engaged in this process. So, with this, I will support this.
Is there a discussion? Not all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the resolution is approved. Applications, I don't believe there are none this evening, so we will proceed to the presentations. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I have no comments this evening.
I have just two brief comments I want to make. First, I want to congratulate Rosanna Hogan, who is a, works in the housing and neighborhood development. She was nominated as the, as one of the Outstanding Individuals of Excellence by the Community Resources Council. That's always an honor to be nominated. And I certainly want to acknowledge the fine employee that we have in the city that certainly serves at a high level to receive that recognition. And my second comment is to the council members. I think the brevity of our meeting this evening speaks to the point that maybe we could get by with one less council meeting. I think this could have been folded into another week, or we could have spent the evening on, in a work session, which perhaps would have been better, been a use of our business. And along that line, next week, we'll be receiving the proposal on, or the, we'll discuss the resolution or change of ordinance to change the number of meetings we have a month. And also, we're going to look at the possibility of having our first readings. So, with that, we go to Mr. Harmon. Nothing? Ms. Hiller?
Let me briefly follow up on the awards. The city actually had four sectors up for awards at the CRC luncheon, in addition to Rosanna as an individual person, and she's just wonderful. The zoo was nominated as a governmental entity and with, and was held in high regard. The Bike Ways Advisory Committee also made the nomination, and it's basically first or second year of, of existence. And Metro Transit actually won the governmental authority, and that was, that was really wonderful. And even they were commenting afterward, wow, two years after things were such a mess. It was just such an honor, and it was certainly an honor to see them get that award as well.
Thank you. Mr. Campos.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I want to invite everyone out. This weekend, Noto Ma's Fall Parade is happening on Kansas Avenue, and it will be ending in the Noto Art section. The parade will be beginning at 11:00 a.m. and be stepping off from Garfield Park. I have been asked by Mr. Slimmer, who is the president of Noto Ma, to extend an invitation to all of my colleagues and to get more dignitaries involved in the community and to show more support for the Noto Art District. And second, I do want to let everyone know, Topequians and those in North Topeka, that the project on the 24 Cloverleaf is almost finished. October 16th, we will see Topeka Boulevard open, along with 24 Highway. So, you will be able to go east and west and north and south, but will not be able to access any of the eight ramps coming off. That work will be finished in November. So, with that, send it on over.
And you're in charge of the weather for Saturday morning in North Topeka. No rain, right? All right. Ms. Everhart, Ms. De La Isla, Mr. Manspeaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just, I'd be interested in the coming weeks to see what the plan is for the half-cent sales tax road maintenance projects moving forward for next year. I know usually about this time of year, we get those put in front of us. So, I'd like to see what's going to happen next year and vet those things out. I'm also interested, and I think these, these things are happening, but we, we've talked a lot about water and stormwater and things like that taking place underneath newly paved roads. I think it's one thing to say that, but it's something completely different to codify it. So, I think I'm interested in trying to pass some, some legislation or some, add to our city code a rule that would apply that says that we have to replace, when we take degrade, we have to replace the waterworks infrastructure underneath the road if it's in need of being replaced, just so that we're making sure that that is happening and, and that projects aren't being missed as, as we're doing that work. And then, last but not least, because I said I would continue to do this, it has been 54 days since we found out that we're paying overtime to supervision employees, and we continue to do so. Thank you.
Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to send a shout-out to Safe Streets. I attended their meeting this past week, and they've got some great thing going, great things going. I sat at the Breaking the Cycle table, at which there were like a dozen people talking about. And Susan Duffy was so informative on her bus drivers knowing, you know, who rides their bus and if there's any issues there. And we even talked about a program called Scared Straight, where we take first-time offenders up to Lansing. And so, that's going to be looked into further. But I am going to have a meeting at my house with our neighborhood this coming Thursday, day after tomorrow, and Brad's going to be there, and Kristy Pankretz, and one other person from the city. Can't think who it is. But anyway, I'm looking very forward, and I'll report on that. We already have about 30 people that'll be there from the neighborhood.
Good, thank you. Ms. Schwartz. Okay, that concludes our public comments this evening. We have one person who's signed up for a public comment, Sylvester Miller.
Hi. This is the first time in my life that I've ever appeared before a public body.
Welcome.
But thank you very much, City Council members, for allowing me this opportunity. I have a prepared statement that I will read, and then I will pass around a copy for each of you. And I am a little bit anxious. It is my first time here. Beginning in January 2006, I was hired to be the Assistant to Mayor Bill Button, and I served in that position for both of Mayor Button's terms as the mayor of Topeka. In April 2013, Larry Wolgast was elected as the mayor. On May 10th, 2013, Mayor Wolgast called me into his office and told
On May tenth, twenty-thirteen, Mayor Wolgast called me into his office and told me that he had decided that he wanted to select his own staff and that it was nothing that I had done. It was later made known to me and can be substantiated that Mayor Wolgast replaced me in order to hire a personal friend, Vicky Buning, as his assistant. Mayor Wolgast did this with the full cooperation and collaboration of City Manager Jim Colson throughout the hiring process that was followed for Vicky Buning. As an elected official, Mayor Wolgast violated the public trust of the citizens of Topeka and abused the power of the office of the mayor when he removed me from my position in order to hire a friend.
Excuse me. All comments need to be made to the council as a whole and not to...
I am.
And not to individuals.
I am making my comments.
And not involved in potential litigation.
There is no potential litigation.
Okay, I just want to clarify what the purpose of public comment is, is to address the council as a whole and not individuals?
I am not addressing any one individual. I am addressing an incident. City Manager Colson violated the public trust of the citizens of Topeka and also abused the authority of his position in his cooperation and collaboration with Mayor Wolgast to hire a friend of the mayor to replace me in my position. No employee of this organization should have to fear that they will be removed from their position in order to employ a friend of Mayor Wolgast. The citizens of Topeka deserve integrity and ethical behavior from both the mayor and the city manager. With much regret, I am sorry to have to say that this has not been the case with Mayor Wolgast and City Manager Jim Colson. And I have copies for all of you and for the record.
Thank you for your statement.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you and to share with you the experience that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other business, the meeting is adjourned.